Okay, it's six o'clock, so if you would join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you very much, and welcome. You can just mention it. Okay, I will. We have some consent items that are the regular public hearing minutes from January 2nd, 2018, and the special meeting hearing, January 22nd, 2018. On these minutes, there'll be a correction, it says 2017, and the financial reports. So do I hear a motion to accept consent items A, B, and C?
I would move to accept consent items A, B, and C.
Do I hear a second?
With the correction.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved, thank you. Action items, three, that means general fund vouchers, payroll vouchers, and water fund vouchers. Do I hear a motion to accept those?
I would move to approve action items A, B, and C.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So moved. On the agenda, we have Doug Peel from Northwest Water Services. He's not here yet, so our next one is Association of Washington Business Representative. What was your name again? I'm so sorry.
It's Brayden.
Brayden, okay, Brayden, if you would go ahead and...
I'd like to, actually, there's three copies of all of these. How many of them are the three commissioners?
Great.
I have five business cards for all of you there.
Perfect, thank you. There we go. Did you go to those websites? And we will get that one, there we go. And there we go, sorry. Okay, thank you.
Awesome, yeah. So again, my name is Brayden Wilkerson. I work at the Association of Washington Business. We are the state's Chamber of Commerce. We are essentially a nonprofit business association with a large focus on economic development here in the state, primarily representing employers or the business community in Olympia. Essentially, what I've done, or sort of my role with the association, I work essentially directly with membership. Just to give you an idea of our members and sort of what we do, the association has about 7,000 to 8,000 members in a given year. All of them, again, are largely private employers. About 3% of our membership is additional nonprofit associations, EDCs, port authorities. But overall, we have member companies as large as Boeing, Amazon, Weyerhauser, Microsoft, Delta Airlines. 90% of our members are smaller, medium-sized companies who employ less than 100 employees. Half of them employ less than 10. We are a civic and political organization, work very closely with groups like the Public Ports Association, again, supporting policies in the state, primarily in Olympia, that would ultimately impact or benefit the employer community. We do work very closely with the Public Ports Association in a number of areas, most recently on rural economic development. Broadband is a big thing, I think, and obviously water rights with the Hearst decision. To give you an idea of sort of, I guess, the political impact that AWB has in the state, in the last four years alone, we probably spent $4.5 to $5 million influencing state executive elections, state legislative races. We also get involved in the initiative process and spent about $1 million and a half, and I think it was two years ago, defeating a carbon tax proposal, which would have affected largely folks in manufacturing, pulp and paper industries, which is, again, paper products, would have affected negatively rural communities as well. So we're heavily involved, again, in just broadly rural economic development and legislation and regulation that affects the employer or business community here in the state. So part of why I've come out or been asked, as far as what's been relayed to me, is basically the conversation about whether or not the Port of Allen has an interest in potentially partnering and becoming a member with our organization to support economic development here in the state.
Great.
Yep.
Thank you. Questions? Do you have any questions? Do you have questions?
Do you work federally also, or just in the state?
We do, we do. We work very closely with our federal delegation, essentially. Examples of that, we worked on basically the renewal of the Export-Import Charter, which affects a lot of small businesses who need access to essentially foreign markets. So if you have local manufacturers who need to be able to ship their goods, or agricultural producers who need to be able to ship their goods, you know, to foreign countries and essentially have those goods secured, we've done a ton of work on that. We do, you know, just depends on the issue we have gotten involved in healthcare policy as well. And there's a couple of things that I can point you to in our, sort of the documents I've given you. We have a legislative review that actually gives you sort of our legislative objectives and also the areas that we work in. We work in everything from environmental policy, healthcare policy, taxes, fiscal policy, employment law, so that would largely affect things like minimum wage, BNO tax rates. As a port authority, you guys are probably also interested in things like MACHA funds, cleanups of, you know, sort of environmental hazard projects. And so we get involved in a variety of areas, and we have about seven government lobbyists who work at the state and federal level in a variety of areas to really try to support economic development. I'll give you another example of things that we've done at the federal level. If you're familiar with the Snake River Valley, essentially, there's some discussion about closing some of the dams because of salmon runs and some of the conversations with the EPA and state over some of those things that would affect, again, rural communities in eastern Washington. So we actually will sometimes litigate on behalf of public port authorities or economic development authorities. And we work very closely right now with the Port of Kalamah, Port of Vancouver, things like the Millennium Bulk Terminal, which is a project down there that essentially would create a, if I remember correctly, it's a coal refinement plant that would support thousands of jobs in that particular area. So, you know, it's largely what we do, again, a lot of it's done in Olympia, but when requested, we will get involved in federal issues and litigate if needed to, or get involved in the initiative or political process as well. So, we do quite a lot.
What have you done regarding health insurance? I mean, what's going on in that arena?
For private business, or what do you mean?
It says that you're refining your service offerings to ensure you're in a place for help and answers the question on topics ranging from health insurance and labor relations. So I'm wondering what AWB is doing.
So practically, what we do to, so we actually were involved with creating association health plans, we're one of the few states in the country that actually has a system in place that allows small businesses to combine, to create, or to get access to group health insurance programs. So a lot of our businesses, a lot of our small businesses in particular, medium-sized businesses, actually participate in our association health plan. Some of the ports as well will participate, because, you know, particularly in rural areas, it's a benefit that is even provided or necessary for public port employees. We have a, we had a person who worked with us for several years in healthcare-related field. She ended up moving to another organization. You know, we're tracking everything that's happening federally with, you know, changes to the Affordable Care Act as well, how that affects Washington employers, and what we can be doing at the state and federal level. I don't have the specific details. The legislative review that you have will give you a clear context of what's happened in Olympia, what our positions were in particular bills, either for, against, or, you know, neutral, particular issues. And that's true in every field, whether it's, again, taxes, fiscal policy, employment law. So, you know, we also get involved in things like discussions around paid family leave, minimum wage increases, which, again, will affect employers in your community, so.
Good on the legislative.
Exactly. Also, you know, when those things go to an initiative, we'll be involved in those discussions with labor unions trying to craft proposals that we think are beneficial to both sides. Give you a couple examples, during the discussion over paid family leave, there were several proposals in Olympia that asked employers essentially to pay six months, 100% employer-paid paid family leave, which would have been detrimental to, I think, small and medium-sized businesses. And so we work with labor unions to basically come up with solutions that we think are beneficial, again, to the business community, but all of us in general. So that, and that's a variety of things. Right now, we're working on, which, again, affects, I think, a large portion of this county and I think a lot of the employers in this area. We're looking at a BNO tax reduction, it's about 40% of BNO tax reduction for folks in the manufacturing sector, which would affect, you know, mills, anybody producing anything in the state, really. And so that 40% reduction would create a, basically, unified tax code across the state, which, the BNO tax, for people who aren't familiar, is a tax on gross sales. So if your company does $100 million a year, you're basically paying a tax on gross receipts, not on profit. And so that's a, essentially, cutting that in half allows companies to invest in capital or people. And so, you know, we work, or we try to work as closely as we can with EDCs, local chambers of commerce, port authorities, because we feel that you guys are an important voice for what's happening throughout the state in terms of the needs for economic development in your local communities. And there's a lot that you have in front of you, and we have a huge emphasis on rural economic development. These parts of the state have not kept up with urban areas like King County, you know, Pierce County, Snohomish, Clark. There's a lot of folks that are being left behind in the state. So we hope that, part of why I'm here is to really develop and cultivate a stronger relationship with the Port of Allen, as well as many other ports throughout the state.
Well, being that we're pretty small, what can you do for us?
Well, and that's the thing, I mean, for, our relationship with you guys is, I would say it's mutually beneficial in the sense that being a member doesn't, you know, you're not, everyone has an equal voice, essentially. And so, you know, we don't necessarily ask anything of you guys, other than that you be involved in helping us craft policies that we think are important for employers. You know, we get involved with things like, again, the Millennium Bulk Terminal down, and I think it's Port of Longview, actually. Trying to, you know, what your issues are, again, are, you know, separate from, say, the Port of Tacoma, Port of Seattle, is kind of relevant to what your areas' needs are. I would imagine, like, the Hearst water rights decision would have affected a lot of homeowners, you know, if you guys are dependent on property taxes, someone's ability to buy a home in the area, or to connect to, basically, water, would have negatively impacted the Port of Allen. So the work that we do in those areas would have affected you directly. And so having you be a part of our organization and say, hey, these are priorities for us, whether it's access to water rights, or, you know, broadband development in this area, which is, in my opinion, they're infrastructure projects that, again, support growth for local employers, or even local residents. So things like that, it just depends on your needs.
Great, thank you. Any other questions?
Do you have an annual report for...
The annual report is the first document that you have in your hand there.
Do you have one for '17 or '18, or just...
We are actually working on that right now.
Great, thank you. Ted, do you have any questions?
No, thanks.
Yeah, we're still looking at things, but thank you very much.
Yeah, awesome, thank you.
Thank you for taking the time, appreciate it.
He also spoke at the Kitsap All Ports Meeting that I went to.
Oh, excellent.
Several of the ports there have joined since then.
Okay, good to know, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. So, you must be Doug?
Yes.
Good.
Hey Doug.
Doug, you're next. Northwest Water Services.
Yes, so as you are probably aware, you guys hired Northwest Water about six years ago to put together a water system plan. We put that together, and then when the state gave their feedback, it raised a number of questions about kind of the future and the development of the Port of Allen water system. And at that point, there was a lot of changes going on here, and it kind of stalled out. So last year, we were hired again to pick up where that was left off and continue to move this forward so we can get a water system plan approved. So tonight, I wanted to come to, first of all, bring you guys a physical copy of the water system plan, address a couple of the comments from the Department of Health, answer any other questions that you might have about either the Department of Health comments or the water system plan, and then also to talk about continuing funding for finishing the water system plan.
Okay, good.
So, I don't know how much time you'd want to devote to this tonight. Probably the most important comment that I got from the Department of Health was regarding the well. Something that I was not at all aware of was apparently, when, I believe at the time that the water right was issued, the Department of Ecology had stated that because of concerns over, I think it was the saltwater intrusion, that they wanted to see eventually a replacement well. And the state brought this up. I don't think that's anything that needs to be addressed immediately, but I'm guessing that probably before they would allow the drilling of a second source for greater production, they would probably require the relocation of this well. And so their comment was mainly geared towards ensuring that in this plan, we had planned for financing of relocating that well.
Okay.
And that's news to me, so I thought I would bring it up.
Well, news to me too.
Yeah. If you have time, I can go through a couple of the other comments, otherwise they're of lesser importance.
I'm interested in hearing it anyway, but what do you think we have? Is it okay, have you seen, I haven't really looked at that for quite a while, so.
Okay. So, a main concern for the Department of Health, because we're proposing a water system that's going to serve the whole Port of Allen community, except for Lakeland Village, is the developed, proposed development of the area. And so, they wanted, basically, for us to kind of confirm some of our assumptions about growth in the area. I based most of what's in the report off of the, I believe it was, call it a vision for the Port of Allen, it was some proposed changes to the zoning. I don't believe that it's yet been adopted. Is that still the general vision that the community is moving towards?
I should ask Jeff, because it's, it's been a moving target.
Which, which the vision, or portion of the comp plan, the county finding out for the UGA?
The vision, developed by the community.
I would say that it, you know, not speaking out of turn, because I'm not responsible for the water plan. But this is the general big picture of the comp plan for the Allen UGA, but it has been updated, there's been different population allocations to the UGA, as recently as last year, proposed and adopted by the county.
Okay.
I think the first one you talked about that was written is pre-2003, original, somewhere 2003, '04, and then there was a adopted version of the comp plan in '05, or 2007. And then, again, they revisited the whole comp plan for the UGA, and then modified, updated numbers, basically, like population allocations for the UGA for the next 20 years. Generally speaking, the numbers are a little lower than they were at least in 2005, '07 timeframe, because they just, they didn't build out the way that they said, both UGA's well felt they had Allen, or hadn't had. Where Sheldon, they were increasing, or pulling more of that one. So, that's to the presidential, to the commercial component, I don't remember, I know the Economic Development Council wrote a piece to be included in the comp plan, which included components from portions related to Allen, but I don't remember what the impact could be towards conveying water to the commercial side of the equation. So, I mean, I, that's a real condensed version of a long process.
Okay.
And I just happened to have been involved with it through, for Allen through 2010, and then, I think, for about 12 years, and then involved, again, with the county, at least, with respect to the UGA of Allen, again, year before last, and again last year, just to try to get them in sync. And I had disagreements with some of the numbers, but that's neither here nor there, but saying, generally speaking, the numbers are a little bit less as far as population allocations compared to the original one, and then compared to 2005, '07, not right now, to the 2017 option. So, we just have to extrapolate that out, go from there.
Okay, so we'll use that as our guide going forward, and I think the most important thing in terms of that is, the port has received a very substantial water right, and we want to be able to draw a nice, clear line on how we move from where the water system is now towards eventually fully putting that water right to use.
Good, okay.
Wouldn't need to, and I don't mean it, like, because it's been hammered, and I'm a water conveyor in the area, so that's why it's been hammered, and, for that, you know it too well, it's a brilliant issue. It's like, it's like, when you get a water right, it's really not a water right, it's a permit, you have, it's got to be perfected, and that's what the real issue is, is the process of the port, or whatever has the water right to get it perfected.
Correct.
That's true.
So, just people need to understand that just as you get a document that says you have a permit, it's really like, kind of like a, like, initial option, it's not, it's not certificate yet. So you don't really have those, not here yet, so to speak.
Yes, and so we need to, yeah, continue to be able to show how we'll eventually be using all of that water in order to maintain that full water right. Otherwise, it will be adjusted to a more appropriate amount.
Do you have any questions for him yet?
Not yet.
Nope?
Not yet.
Good, okay. Was there one other item, Doug, or you said two?
And, oh, so one other item was, the state wanted to know kind of a timeline for if the port was going to be essentially absorbing any of the other smaller water systems within the area. That does not have to occur, but if that's something that's planned, they would like to know if that's, you know, when that would be occurring, I guess.
Okay.
Maybe a written timeline of what we're thinking, or...
Yes. And so that was the main, I guess, issues that I thought would be useful to discuss.
Okay.
Are there any other questions?
Is it possible to get a copy of that?
Yes, the comments, or the water system plan?
The comments.
Yes.
Start there.
I have those.
Oh, you do?
Okay. You asking the comments from Department of Health, Department...
Correct.
Yeah, I have those.
Yeah, and then there's a PDF of the water system plan, and then I'll leave you with this copy, which is still going back and forth with the Department of Health.
And it's grown.
Well...
The Port of Allen is proposing to be quite a large water system. It's moving from being a very small community water system towards proposing to be, you know, a municipal water system in line with a small city, which is the other part of addressing you this evening, which is our fees for providing the service. Previously, you'd allotted some additional money for us to address the remaining comments from the Department of Health. We addressed those comments, we were, we've compromised with the port on payment for that, and we had quite a large number of hours that were not paid. And so for addressing these additional comments, we would request that we receive payment.
Okay, so that's something that we need to discuss, correct?
I have it in my report here.
Okay, all right.
Doug and I have discussed it already.
Okay, very good, good. Okay, so where do we go from here, then, Doug? What, once we, you get paid for what you are, what you've done, what you are going to finish, then I think we need to discuss about more implementation of some of these projects, and then you mentioned the RFP in regard to hiring you to do more, correct? Is that what that's all about?
Essentially, because of the large gap in time and that kind of increase in scope, we have other things to address from the Department of Health.
Okay.
So, yes, so covering those, it's a lesser amount than previously. And so from there, we will be addressing those remaining comments and working with Larry on some of those to get some more information from the board.
Okay.
I believe that this, that previously you had re-adopted the water system plan. The state has asked for that again. We'll have to see if they will otherwise accept that it was done fairly recently. If not, you may have to review and re-adopt, again, the water system plan.
Okay.
They just want to make sure that the Port of Allen is, has reviewed this as in its full agreement with what's being submitted to them.
You know, I might suggest that we have a work session on this, because I haven't really looked at that for quite a while, and like I said, it's grown.
Yes.
And so...
How long have you been working on it? I mean, like, since we had Rusty left, and, I mean, how long have you had it this time?
So, I believe that it was almost a year ago when we initially started discussing that this needed to be done, actually actively working on this, I think it's been about six months.
Okay.
I think it was 2012, the...
When we started it?
Yeah, some of the other documents.
It's been a long time.
I've seen, have that data on them.
Okay. Well, what do you think, Commissioners, about having a work session on this?
Yeah.
And discussing a little more, and getting a little more understanding on it?
Absolutely.
So Doug, maybe you could come back at a work session, or, you know, educate us a little bit better, and what we need to do, and answer some of those questions that you have that are in there that need to be addressed.
Okay.
Would that be all right?
Yes, that would be excellent.
Okay, so Larry, if you can get together with Doug, and we'll discuss when we can do that, and then, do you have to travel far? Do you live local, or...
I just bought a church.
Okay, all right.
Lucky us.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Any other questions?
No.
Gentlemen, are you...
No.
Good, okay. Thank you, Doug. Anything else from you that you wanted to share, or...
No, that was it.
Okay.
Thanks for all your work on this, Doug, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Doug. Yeah, greatly appreciate it. Okay, moving forward. Commissioner reports. Who would like to? Pardon?
No, we have a PDF.
Well, he probably will, I'm not sure.
So I'll go.
We'll be speaking with him tomorrow.
Besides the two port meetings, I went to the EDC Annual Luncheon. Our keynote speaker was David Wyndham from, he's got a, he's got a new job title, but it's basically the permit, health department, kind of talked about the future, some growth projections for the area. I guess you are going to leave it.
Thank you.
Thanks. And I did go to a meet and greet this afternoon for an interim EDC Director, Jim Toomey, from Port of Pasco. I'm sure you probably remember him. He was, he was asking about Bonnie, that he retired in 2013, and the board has reached out to him and asked him to take over an interim position, which, keep the train on the track, but help us recruit and hire a new executive director for the EDC, because the job market's really tight right now, and what we found out was when we had four great applicants, three of them were gone. When it finally came down to offering a position, we... When it finally came down to offering a position, we, we had great candidates, but there's a lot of work out there for great candidates. So he, he's going to do it three to six months, help us get somebody in that position. The staff's been keeping the ship upright, doing a great job. I've seen more activity in North Mason. Karen was super apologetic that she wasn't going to be here today. I said, Karen, it's okay. Like, we, we'd like to see somebody once a quarter, and we weren't even getting that. So they've really stepped up their game, and they've been visiting businesses in North Mason. They stopped by to see Larry one day with somebody who we were looking at offering a position to, which we ultimately did not. But, yeah, I think they're doing a good job, and, and I'm happy with what EDC's doing right now, really happy. That was my month.
Great, good.
Yep, besides attending the two meetings today, Larry and I met with Mindy Harlow to discuss the Sweetwater project, and can't get a lot more information on that. So that was about it.
That's great, good. Glad that went well. I did the regular port meeting on the fifth. On the eighth, met with Walter about the oyster house, more stabilization and repair. And on the 12th, Larry and I did the Port Comprehensive Scheme of Harbor Improvements presentation, which was attended pretty well.
The Community Voice.
And then we also did that one.
Oh, okay, not, well, that was here, that one.
Yeah.
Yep, gotcha.
On the 13th, we had an oyster house meeting, there were seven attendees. And on the 16th, the PRTPO, which is the Peninsula Regional Transportation Planning Organization, that was the executive board at Mason County Public Works. Trying to remember if, there wasn't really anything that directly affected us at that, that one, except they showed more about the model, I mean, demand model that they, they have. And then on the 26th, Larry and I did another presentation and a survey results at the North Mason Community Voice. And then March 3rd, this Saturday, we, we removed more concrete from the oyster house with six guys out there. And just a reminder to Huya Forest Cleanup Day, April 21st, Saturday, at Camp Oak Patch, which is just off of Effindal Pass Road on the, Pass Billman Road on the left. Lunch will be provided. There we go. Okay. Larry, you're on.
All right, well, water system issues. As I reported last month, Northwest Water System has submitted our water system plan to the state. It's currently under review. Northwest Water System expected to have to make some tweaks, as you've heard, and they were right. We received a letter from the Department of Ecology and one from the Department of Health about what do they want to see modified in the plan. From what I could see reading the letters, there wasn't anything major, but there are a significant number of items to be addressed. I passed both letters on to Northwest Water System and our water system manager, Steve Holloway. Spoke with Doug, and he estimates it will require an additional 30 hours of work to address their concerns, for which they plan to bill us at $130 an hour, over $3,900 to do them. I responded that our position is we paid for the plan once and never received it. Their position is they did the plan, and we dropped the ball in submitting it in the, during the transition with Rusty. Meanwhile, nobody that had anything to do with the original plan on either side is involved in it now. So no one can refute or approve either contention. However, what is undeniable is that the rules from Department of Health and Department of Ecology have changed, requiring more work than the original plan, which had it been completed in a timely manner, we wouldn't be dealing with now. So Doug and I agreed to compromise at $2,500 if you are all agreeable. And Doug was here to answer any questions, but, you know, you, you heard what I heard. As far as our water system franchise agreement with Mason County that's up for renewal is concerned, I spoke with Loretta Swanson at Mason County Public Works on Wednesday. She said, things have changed again, and she emailed me the old renewal form the county had been using late Friday afternoon. She told me to fill it out, email it back, and put the franchise renewal fee warrant of $300 in the mail, and she'll take care of it. The warrant made payable to Mason County Public Works was in the vouchers you approved in December. We've been holding on to it, waiting for the county to move forward with the renewal process, which Loretta previously told me was being overhauled. But I've been honored by getting this off my plate, so it looks like this is how she wants to handle it. It still does need to go in front of the county commissioners for final approval, though. Criminalization of the Marina rules. This project has definitely taken on a life of its own. After having our attorney rewrite the entire set of Marina rules into county's code vernacular as the county commissioners requested, they said they have reservations about adopting it. So we pared it down to just the theft of service items, mortgage, launch, and parking. Meeting with them again, with the attorney this time, the commissioners were still reluctant to deal with it because of what they termed additional work for the sheriff. Based on our track record of having only one service request from the sheriff for a drunk driver, which was not in the scope of what we're asking for, but does violate state law, coupled with our willingness to allow the county to collect and keep any fines levied for violations, there shouldn't be any additional work for the sheriff. County's budget situation also shouldn't have any bearing on the cost whatsoever. Plus, we took our direction from the county commissioners on how to proceed with this and have incurred several thousand dollars of costs by having our attorney prepare the ordinance in the county's legal language at the assistance of the county commissioners. So I contacted Frank Schmelick, who's WPPA's attorney and the one recommending criminalization of Marina rules as best practice for all ports. He made the suggestion, we enter into an inter-local agreement that treats us primarily as a traffic ticket under Title 46. We have the county commissioner set the fine, with us issuing the ticket, and the county collecting the fines. Would require deputizing our people to issue the tickets. But, excuse me. I suggested this to the county commissioners in an email, and Commissioner Drexler responded that, telling me to talk to the sheriff and see if he'll agree to that, but she was certain he wouldn't. Last week, I got a letter from Frank Pinter, the head of Support Services for the county, telling me the commissioners have decided to reject doing this citing additional work for the sheriff, the prosecutor, and the courts. I've since reached out to the sheriff looking for a solution, but we haven't connected yet. We've played phone tag a couple of times here. Meanwhile, Commissioner Jackson has some ideas on how to resolve this, so he and I will work on that together with the sheriff and report back. I drafted a response to Mr. Pinter's letter, which is in your meeting packet along with the original. However, I haven't sent it yet, wanting to see if the sheriff has some suggestions on how to resolve this. But as near as I can see, our only alternative now is to call the sheriff every time there's a violation of RCW 53.80.220, which would defeat the commissioner's entire rationale by making additional work and creating additional costs for the sheriff, prosecutor, and courts. So I'd like some direction on how to proceed from here. Do we want to attempt to recover our cost of the attorney from the county? We hadn't been instructed by the commissioners to have the rules rewritten, we'd have never incurred those costs. ROII changes. We received a letter from BIAW telling us that LNI has changed the rules that allowed us to participate in their plan because we don't report under a construction classification. We had been approved previously by LNI. So I'm researching other ROII membership programs. The premium rebate percentage for any program we qualify for most likely won't be as high as BIAW, but anything we get back is better than nothing. Email list. We continue to compile an email list for notifying residents of our district about meetings, public hearings, and events. We keep posting this on Facebook and in a number of Mason County Facebook groups on a semi-regular basis, and will continue doing so. And the list keeps growing. We have about 65 members who have opted in. We've also signed up with Mailchimp, which is a free service that'll manage our mailing list for us. It's cleaner and quicker than dealing with Office 365 should we have some massive public records requests for email documents. BiAS software upgrade. We are still in the hands-on learning phase with BiAS, as we do specific tasks in BiAS. They are there to answer our questions and walk us through the processes. I'm sure you noticed a new cleaner look of most of the reports you have for this meeting, which were generated in BiAS. However, we've not run the end-of-the-month closeout for January yet, which is why there was no profit and loss or balance sheet. BiAS is going to teach us how to close out on Friday. Since, once we have that, I'll forward it to each of you. LeAnn has some sample documents, such as the budget versus actual and the treasurer's reports from the county for year review, so you'll know what they look like when you see them. And she can answer your questions about those as well. LeAnn and I attended the BiAS rally in Spokane last month. It was informative, covering not only things like annual report filing with an emphasis on the 2018 changes, but preparing financial statements in BiAS, cash receiving, online and electronic bill paying, and financial reconciliation for special purpose districts, which we are. It also covered cybersecurity in a big way, as well as some management tips. We both felt it was well worth our time. 2018 budget adjustments. I expect to have some revenue and expense changes to the budget. So once we get the final numbers, I'll ask you to approve an amended budget. However, at this point, before doing that, I'd like us to wait and see what we get for tax collections in April, and for us to be 100% up and running with BiAS, so everything matches and balances when we do it. Public record software. I talked to the vendor, I've been working with the, on this, and the programmer. We nailed that exactly what we need for this to work. They have a solution, however, it doesn't fit our budget, of course. After we discussed this last month, I reached out to a number of other ports to see if they are interested in participating in the development cost, which is around $30,000. For that, they'll receive copies of the software and receive training as well. I forwarded you all copies of what I sent them, and we'll report more on this as soon as I have some responses. New public records requirements. I've received an email last month from Steve DiGiulio saying one of the new requirements of the Public Record Act is to maintain the log and tracking process for all Public Record Act requests. He strongly encouraged us to establish and maintain a formal process, even for apparently informal exchanges. We have done that, and it's up and running now. Also, I ran some numbers this morning as to what we spent on public records requests, both in 2016 and 2017. And between the two years, it's about $23,000. Gazebau rates. Looking at ways to maximize the return on the gazebo. You all took our recommendation on changing the rate structure for the gazebo last month. Happy to report, we actually had an hourly rental, two-hour minimum, two days after you did that. We're also talking with a car club that wants to make this a stop on a tour event they're doing and want a half-day rental. We should know if this is a go or not tomorrow. Also, we checked into the public record notification requirements for raising the rates, and all that is required is for us to have a public hearing and the increases be implemented in a public meeting, which you all did last month. Realistically, we are still the lowest-priced wedding venue in the region, but some people have difficulty understanding how we charge one rate for the gazebo and another for the damage deposit. Also, doing the damage deposit bookkeeping and refund process is very labor-intensive for us. So we're now promoting this on Facebook and looking for other ways, like wedding shows to promote it. Running out the small office, we're continuing to promote this on Facebook and actually had someone come in about it. She ended up renting this room instead for a half-day, but she'll be using the office from time to time as well. Also had a number of inquiries, but no other bookings yet, but we will continue promoting it. Codeur Dojo classes, this has become a bit of a backburner project, but it's still on my radar. And finally, personal issues. I'd like to take part of my vacation from July 3rd through the 9th. We have a meeting on the 2nd. Also, I've been called for jury duty starting the week of March 19th. My wife has jury duty starting tomorrow.
Okay.
So, and that is my report.
Thank you, Larry. So next, we have Security Officer's Report. Travis, thank you.
Pretty light again this month. We did have a medical emergency on the docks regarding the sailboat that's been docked out front. They came in and parked, and one of the people on the boat was taken away by ambulance. That was on the 23rd. Basically told them, hey, you got until the end of the weekend, or we'll start, you know, inquiring charges. They were able to get the boat off the dock, and then a few days later, the boat broke loose and ended up at the end of the bay.
Oh, no.
So it's not on our property, so I guess.
Is it still there?
I don't know if it's still at the end of the bay, but it's, it's not back in the bay or back moored out there, so, or anchored out there. Transient population started to pick up again. So we had somebody sleeping on the beach here the other day. So keeping an eye on that, to try to keep that down to a minimum or none. So it's, it's, weather's picking, getting a little warmer, so we're seeing a little bit more activity on that end. But seems like everything seems fine.
Good, that's great.
No, no new graffiti in any way.
Thank you very much, Travis.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. It's wonderful. Okay, new business. Discuss the AWB membership. Do you still want to make a decision this time? You have more questions?
How much is it? $250?
No, $750.
$750.
And I negotiated that down from $1,000.
I would, um.
I'm sorry, is that yearly?
Yes.
I would like to, uh.
And I could maybe get it down to 500, I don't know.
If you can do that, yeah, if you can do it, I'd go for it.
I'd like to do a little more research. I know I did some at the, at the luncheon, and was kind of starting to sway that way a little bit, but maybe if one of us could give a compelling argument why it's a good idea, that, of course, he thinks it's a good idea, but.
I do.
Yeah, and Larry does, but, you know, our, our person that presented does, and I think, yeah, if you can get it to 500, I think that would be good. Move it on to old business next month.
Okay.
How about you, Ted?
I agree. I, I, wouldn't be bad to try it for a year, at a reduced rate, and then if it's something that we feel beneficial to the port, if the rate goes up next year. But it seems like they have a lot of groups, and I'm kind of worried about what a small port is going to benefit from.
They've made a big push for ports to join, and I know a number of the smaller ports have, they were in the WPPA meeting, did presentation, they signed up a bunch of people right there. And like I said, I went to the Kitsap All Ports meeting when Brendan did his presentation, and he signed up two of those on the spot.
They have a website that I spent a little bit of time on, kind of got me thinking a little more about it, and.
They're work, they got a big push on about jobs in the rural areas, and that's where I think we would benefit. They're, you know, they had, they had two summits about creating jobs in the rural areas. One in November, and then just recently, yeah.
Well, and being that they're more like lobbyists, that is really critical.
They are.
For ports. I think that's important to support, just for that, but again, since we're so small, there's really not a direct benefit necessarily, yet. But I'm all for, if you can get it down to five, then we should give it a try. At least, that's my opinion.
I agree.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would say, we could probably vote on it today, because we're all in agreement.
Well, if you all vote on it, and I can go to them and say, here's what they did, they told me, they said if you.
Well, let's have a motion then.
If we can join for $500, they'll join today.
Yeah. You should, do you need a motion on that, probably?
Yeah, I would like one, yeah.
I would make that motion, that we join the AWB for the fee of $500 for 2018.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Okay, there you go. There's your marching orders.
Thank you.
Item B, discuss the additional payment to the Northwest Water System. If you, do you want to elaborate on that?
Yeah, it's the same thing. He, he agreed that they would finish the plan for $2,500. I think we're so deep in this thing, and we're so close to getting it done, that's, we really need to do it. I don't like the idea of it.
Well, it's like you said, whoever dropped the ball, it was somebody from here or somebody from there.
And nobody, and nobody knows.
Right.
That's the thing. Nobody knows for sure who did what.
I still think that they've discounted their rate, finishing the initial plan, plus these additional questions. I think we're, I mean, they believe that they're in the right, we believe that. We believe that we're in the right. They've compromised with us. I believe we should pay that additional $2,500 to get it done.
I agree.
I would agree too. How about you, Ted?
I agree, but if he comes back for a work session, is that another $130 an hour?
No. I'll make sure.
And, you know, I don't know that we, do we need him at the work session, or do we just go over the plans or better?
I don't think we do, really.
Maybe we could look at the plan and-
What I'll do, I'll forward you all the letters we got from the Department of Health tomorrow.
Okay.
And I can probably answer most of the questions for you.
Okay, that'd be great.
You know, questions that you have. And if, and if I can, I'll just call them up and say, hey, what's the deal here?
And the water plan's pretty significant, so we each have to spend a lot of time going through that.
Yes.
Yeah.
You need a motion for that, or can you just pay it?
I have the spending authority to pay that.
Okay. So, we'll move on then.
Yeah.
We did have a motion, though, to only spend $75.
To how much? Well, do we need a motion then for $2,500?
Maybe.
Yeah, my spending authority's $5,000.
She's saying we had a motion that said we were only going to spend $7,500 on that plan.
Oh, okay. Yeah, well, then maybe we-
Oh, okay, then let's go ahead.
Well, I would move that we spend an additional $2,500 to answer the Department of Ecology and Department of Health's questions and finish up our water plan.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Okay, the criminalization of the Marida rules is our next one on the agenda.
I don't know what to do here. I mean, I feel like we're getting, I feel like we're the shuttlecock in a badminton game here.
I think talking to the sheriff first, you know?
Well, and I think that's the first order of business, and him and I played phone tag a little bit last week, and he actually reached out to Ted as well.
Good.
So-
I just wonder what, you know, in my, my knowledge of deputizing, I just, I don't know what that entitles somebody to. If it's just to write a parking ticket, he probably would do it, but if it gives you more authority than that, he probably is not going to do it.
It creates a whole bunch of problems. They're going through accreditation, they have to know whoever's writing those tickets or up to date on his training and everything else, so that would cause a problem, and I don't think, I know the sheriff is pretty strict on who he gives in.
I imagine.
So, he did reach out. He said there was, he received a call, and then he called me back on his way to some meeting in Ellensburg, and I need to send him an email out tonight saying we really wanted to spend an hour just going through this or a half hour. It shouldn't take that long.
Sure.
It's not that big of an issue, so.
So, what about when you're parking down at Bremerton to take the ferry, and you don't pay your parking fee there, you get a ticket from Diamond Parking? What authority is that under?
That's a civil interaction. You know, the Port of Bremerton is in an agreement with them to enforce it, just like if we were to have no parking up here and then have North Mason tow. We enter into that civil agreement with North Mason tow, just to come pick up that vehicle, and they're the ones going to get paid for it.
It's worse than a fine.
Yep, it is. And, I mean, unless, unless you privatize the whole grounds here and then just issue kind of a parking ticket, then you have to have a way of collecting the fees, enforcing it, and doing all that stuff, and it pretty much just goes through collection, it's the most traffic tickets due now, so. There's a way to do it.
Okay.
And I think, we're caught in a rock and hard spin, but there's a way to do it.
So, you guys are on it.
So, that's great. So, keep us posted then.
Yeah, we'll, we'll stay on it.
And did you talk to Frank since this last conversation? Since they sent us a letter?
No, I just got the letter like Thursday or something, and I haven't. So, but I did send you guys a copy of his letter and the response letter I wrote.
Yeah, I would like to hold off on the response just for a little bit.
And that's why I didn't send it.
And before you send it, could you let us know?
That's why I didn't send it.
I would say if we don't get a response from the sheriff, unless he's out of the state by this week, we've got to do something, and this is taking up way too much time.
Sure.
So.
This has been like three years that we're, we were, just a little history. We proposed this when it was first told to us we needed to do it. That's three years ago. That was like one of the very first projects I got when I got here. We sent it down there. It was supposed to get on the commissioner's agenda. The clerk of the board never put it on their agenda.
We thought it was approved.
Yeah, we had an attorney, a Shelton attorney that worked on it, and he told me, yeah, don't worry about it. I got it handled. You're good to go. Well, he never followed up and saw that it got on the agenda. We believed that he had taken care of it. So, we get, I was at a WPPA meeting, and I got buttonholed by a guy from the Port of Brownsville. And he's like, how'd you guys get that done? Because we're trying to get that done. So, I told him what our process was. Well, he called me on Monday, and he said, that's never been approved. I'm like, what? You know?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the Port of Allen decides Potlatch is the only port that charges for either boat lock.
No, no.
Which one in Mason County does?
Oh, in Mason County, that may be true.
Yeah, I'm just saying Potlatch is tribal-y, so I'm just thinking, I know Shelton does it.
I think that's correct.
All the rest are state parks or-
Yeah. I know in Kitsap, Port of Manchester does.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, no, no, in Kitsap County, there's, I think the only one that does it is Salisbury Port, so.
Yeah.
But, and so the amount of calls, I read that letter, so if they're asking for us to document the amount of calls, it's very simple for them to pull a CADA report and just say, hey, this is how many calls come from Port of Allen on their two launches, and this is the impact on your deputies. But if they want us to call, then it's an impact on communications, and like I said earlier, dispatch and everything else, so.
Yeah. Great, well, good. Keep us posted then.
Okay.
That's great. Thank you, Ted. Okay, old business. What have we got? Anything? I don't think I have anything. Public comment. Did you have something?
Well, we do want to set our workshop.
Oh, sure.
We want to do that this month. And guess what? On the calendar. I came from Shelton.
I know it's a little lame, but I can't, I will be gone, is this March? I'll be gone from here to here. I'll be gone all this. So, I'll have to be the end or-
I have jury duty the week of the 19th.
Gone here, that would be good.
On the 12th?
A week from today.
The 12th would probably be the only day of the, of this month.
It would work for you?
Okay, yeah, probably me too.
The 12th of March?
Okay, next Monday?
Yep. Does that sound acceptable?
Works for me.
Six o'clock.
6:00 PM? Okay, very good.
Some reminders. Thank you.
Okay, now we can go to public comment. Welcome. Jeff, what have you got? Or Ken?
It's always dynamic. You never know for sure what's going to be. Jeff Currie. Still have everything in Allen, but reside in Belfair, in just 4,000 feet out of the UGA. Anyway, on the comp plan, first of all, I appreciate the port having the meetings again televised, you know, recorded, because again, I don't have to hit two meetings a month. I can see the one online and listen, listen, speed it up, listen up, and make you guys go faster. And so, I appreciate that, because it allows me to, you know, hear, you know, hear what's coming, coming down, so appreciate that. Second thing is with the, your adopting of that, I call it the comp plan for the Port of Allen, that's your harbor, comprehensive harbor improvements and what have you. The one you have online on your website, that's the one you adopted. Is it?
I think so.
Yes.
Is it? Okay, because I haven't looked online on-
And I understand. I say things, and you guys may do them, you may not, not do them, but I didn't see anything that was in there with the water system, and as you probably get in the drift, it sounds like something needs to be there.
Good point, because we-
I asked our CEO about it. They said no. It didn't really need to be in there.
Okay.
They were more concerned with projects, not ongoing business operation.
Right, but see Ted, you know what?
Yeah, but it should, yeah, we probably should look at that.
Would come down the other way, and they'd want to know where you're going to focus monies and funds and things like that. And I personally, I don't, I mean, I don't care one way or the other, which way you do it. I'm just saying that you got projects, you got things, there's things that affect it. Have it in, my personal opinion is have it in there, so it's a discussion point, so that the public, you know, knows, because it sounds like, you know, just getting the gist, a little bit of what they're saying on the water system plan, that there's some other activities that the port's got to be involved with, and-
That's something we should probably put on next year, because we do visit that every year.
Yeah, we do. Annual update.
No, no, and I'm-
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not hung up on whether it is or isn't. I'm just saying that I know how things, supposedly how, you know, GMA is supposed to be, you're supposed to have, you know, public agencies are supposed to have projects in there, that they're, you know, one, six, 20, whatever number of years out that they're, you know, they're planning for. So, and hopefully, on that note of the water system plan, hopefully I didn't, I mean, answered what you were asking for. It was a little awkward there with-
I'm sorry about that, but I hadn't been involved in that for so long. I thought, well, maybe you could have, help, have a little clarification, so I appreciate that.
No, okay. I was, you know, I wasn't sure which way, because you have a plan, we have a plan.
Right.
They're similar, but they're not in sync in any way, you know, shape or form, but I found it interesting, because the state was requiring me to notify you guys and to provide the port meeting, you know, notes of our plan, notes of what our intentions are, all those kind of things. And I'm not saying the port has any issue, but I'm saying it's interesting that they did not come the other way and ask to review that. And that was part of my, when Larry and I were smiling, it's because we've, you know, we've discussed these things a little bit, and it's kind of like we're at Catch 22. We can't move ahead until the plan's done. And if my understanding's correctly, the plan was supposed to be done in what you kind of were focusing back in 2012 and '13, and then we would address things like wholesaling water or things like that, in other words. So, I don't know where, I don't know where the state is in the whole scheme of things, because that's-
The other thing too, the people that we're working with at the state-
Right.
-in both departments have changed twice since we started this.
Sure, that's how it goes. But hopefully, you still got, you know, from, I know that Department of Health have changed, for sure. So, and I'm, I'm just kind of treading water personally, you know, with our water system plan, just until the port gets to a point, and, you know, we've discussed a few things and numbers, but it's, we're so, because we don't know where the port's plan is in the scheme. I'm not saying anything against the port, I'm just saying, getting it adopted, as you see, the plan's quite a bit bigger than the last time we probably saw it, because it was like that, and now it's, you know, approaching the size. Of course, ours grew too, so, you know, we're up 350 pages, so it looks like you're getting close, so.
Well, we need to get up to speed on it too, so-
Right.
It'll be good to get the workshop.
So, anyway, that's my, the gist of the thing with the water system plan. One last thing with the plan. Is it, is it your plan to discuss some of it at this next meeting, your workshop here next Monday?
Yes.
Okay, I'll try to make time and come in, because obviously-
Yeah, I agree.
You know, I've, I've known what your plan is, you've known what my plan is, and I've got some experience with the comp plan from the county side of the equation, so. And then last but not least, and I know I sound like a broken record, tip cap.
Yes.
But I, I will keep saying, and I'll keep bringing here, you know, it's your, it's your call as a port, but I mean, there are projects, and they're going to want to know, and, you know, if you got the time, great.
That's great.
And you may know, but we have a presentation, the tip cap committee has a presentation, I should say, advisory panel. They're not a committee, they're advisory panel to the county. Tip cap's planning to give a presentation at The Voice, I believe, at the end of March this month. So, we'll be there, and we're going to be doing that in three different districts hopefully this year to try to get, solicit public input and what have you, and to let the public know what kind of projects, because there are some new road issues being looked at.
So, are they looking for projects, or you just want update?
Well, all of the above.
Okay.
And I was, you know, if there's something that rises up, you know, like, I don't know if you noticed, I guess you wouldn't see it yet, but discussions are starting to occur with addressing issues for what we call Razor Road East versus Razor Road West.
Yeah.
Trails End, you know, all that. There are some issues, and it's, it's coming up through the county and different things. It's in the, I believe in the six-year tip, the transfer, you know, improvement projects, and they're starting to look at spending some county funds, expending some funds towards figuring that out. In fact, the consultant that's doing the Belfair connections, as well as, you know, UGA road, you know, work, they, I guess, have been hired by, I think, I don't know if they've been hired yet, but at least we saw the document going through as if they were applying to, the county was applying to hire him towards finish during that, some portion of that study for connecting what we call Razor Road East, but it's basically from the Twin Furs, Twin, is it Twin Furs? Anyway, Twin something, Twin View property, that was originally owned by Mr. Fogel years ago. Up at the top, there's about 80 acres. It kind of sits between where the road ends and where the other road picks up.
Okay.
And so, there's, there's discussions going on with that, so. Anyway, those may be the projects, you know. Like I said, we just, all we're looking for is input. That doesn't mean it, we just, we're supposed to be soliciting, getting input. That's what the tip cap's about, and of course, you know, ports are economic development, so, you know, we look for it. I mean, if there's none, there's none, but I mean, I just, as long as it's still out there, I will keep coming to the meetings and say, oh, by the way, we want input.
Well, we probably should look at that route as a fire chief, too, is a problem. Just accessibility, you know? Okay, but anyway.
Anyway.
Good.
So, there's my two bits for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Ken?
Yes. Thank you. Hi, Ken Van Busker from Belfair. Thank you, commissioners. I just want to echo what Jeff just said. They, the county did hire that consultant, amended their contract, and there's a real possibility that that might be where the bypass comes in on the other side, too. That's one of the alternatives that they're thinking about, and I'd encourage the port to be involved in those discussions. And tomorrow evening, there's a discussion about the possible roundabout at Log Yard Road, and that's down at the library. You don't have to make comment tomorrow night, but they have until a week or so later. And I think the port should, that's kind of key to potential port operations. I know for a while, the port was looking at some property in there, and it might be beneficial to, to figure out what they're talking about there.
Do you know what time that meeting is?
I was just going to answer the same question.
5:30, I believe it's 5:30 to 7:00 at the North Mason Timberland Library.
Okay.
Could you, the Log Yard Road, are you talking the one up on top of the hill?
Yeah.
A roundabout there? That's being proposed?
Yeah, that's what Mason Transit, they're meeting with the same consultant, the SCJ Alliance. They're having a big presentation tomorrow night, and they're going to talk about solutions for that intersection, because they're going to cite their park and ride to the south of Highway 3 there, right at that intersection, so I just thought the port should, should be involved with that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Ken. Okay, anything else for the good of the order? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.